It stated that you wouldn't necessarily be consulting Buckingham Town Council to after the study was completed in the autumn and probably back into twenty twenty three. And my point with the question was that I felt that Buckingham Town Council should be involved because of the local planning, that's what you said. Clearly, I'm going to have to go back, as I said to him in the meeting, I think the answer's fine, but it's just going to generate another question. My personal view is Buckinghamshire Council, not as town councils, that without the Buckingham Town Council being fully involved in this or drafting the local plan and and being able to take consideration of that, it could cause huge costs. But of course, I may get to see the study confidentially before it goes out in public, which is always difficult. I don't think the cabinet member was, to be fair, quite didn't realise that it'd get picked up as a story did. I think he's right that it did. I think it's right that we discuss these matters. If you are a resident or a a business or something along the route, you've got every right to be involved in the discussions, I believe. I will push that. But I say my view is the town council is the best people to be able to delineate the opinions of the community. Because Buckinghamshire Council members represent different boards over a large area. And this body of people here are very good at and we've got members of the Buckingham side as well, who would take a long historic look at the town and would work together to recommend the best option. But they're not asked to talk and they're not asked to be included. It's rather left to people who perhaps agree with the and for over twenty hours against the communities, which on the other side of the road, those peoples will be making the decision. So I hope that they're going to bring something forward to consult on before the decisions are made and not a consultation about the decision. And then we'll probably find it. So it's all tight, high in the sky thing. But until we get a roof, until we get the actual roof that they're suggesting, we're all left in the air, aren't we? I know that doesn't really solve anything, but that's the truth. So I can't do any more than that.
So Mark, at this stage, I don't think there's much more.
Well, obviously, for the for a reasonable so I don't know the process. So obviously, as a part of the local plan, would this currently be implemented for the local plan? As is or as a different option.
Yeah, we haven't got that far with that.
Once we pull the other.
Yeah.
Then we we're stuck.
No. That's what we are working on, yes, then. Anyway, I hope that's.
We can be sure I won't decide it.
Yeah. Thank you very much for coming. We've got two other speakers tonight. This is Eunice Robinson, who knows her introduction. And also Mr Edmund Sums, both like to speak. So Eunice, would you like to start off? You could come this forward, so we can all hear you. Thank you very much. If you need to sit down, please do.
No, I'll have to stand.
Okay.
Well, it's twenty seven years since moving into Mawcide Place. And I've experienced three major flooding incidents. The second flood fifteen years ago in this July, three properties were flooded in Mawcide Place, one family being out of their home for six months. And then there were three houses were also flooded in the early release of blood in one of the The water does not flow over the riverbank into Mawcide Place, but it comes from upstream from the town car park here. Now there's new care home through Cecil's yard. And it flows out through the side of Burnwell, onto the High Street, into Walk Yard, along the High Street, along Stratford Road, where the town water from the hospital and from Addington Road reaches its lowest point and then it floods into the BP garage with the shop, power garden and into the bottom walk yard. The water reaches the lowest point in the corner of the BP garage, Walk Yard and the Villas. It has been, so it has it has been there, this strip of land, which is belonging to three villages, which is where the water enters. And the water goes through along the old canal and finds its lowest place. I thought there might be a plan of the thing on the screen, wasn't it? No, no. So I'm trying to describe it. This water is contaminated and in the two thousand and seven flood, we were unable to eat our vegetables because of the unlevelled contaminative of water. In twenty twenty, the applicant submitted yet another planning application for permission to add an extension to five the villas. It was refused on the twenty second of February this year because of the flooding issue of the whole site. The twenty twenty Christmas flood saw water in the Villas garden reaching a metre from the garage, which is part of the site, which hasn't been turned into a garage and which is unused for two cars. And it reached the step of the patio at number it reached the step below the patio at numbers four and five. And then it floods into the backarms of twelve properties and the properties of six, eight and ten Mawcide Place. The water flowed right through getting to the front of the building and getting to the fresh holes of the properties. But fortunately, it only went into the garage and didn't flood the actual houses, but the road in front was snowing. Now, no one's a planning application, the flood risk assessment for five of the villas. This is a professional regional document. And this is the site plan which was used which was used by the plan in two thousand and nine. And the only alteration is where they put in the flats between, or create. So this site was used, is identical, more or less with that. It's not an up to date plan. It shows the main source of water flowing from Addington Road into the BP forecourt and through the wall of one of the villas and the car wash. It actually flows through the plot of land between one of the villas and two twenty twenty two Mawcide Place. This is just, this is just as I'm trying to describe it. And I have here my original plan, which shows it, well, you won't be able to see it, but that shows exactly where the water went in twenty twenty, not what's indicated on.
Yeah, I'm afraid you're running out of time, isn't it?
So anyway, so anyway, so the water then is able to flow through the the wall of number one villas and it doesn't go through this strip of land. And the elevated section now of the building is above the ground level and the window faces the wall and it's right close to the to the wall, the front wall. And the drainage system, which they have documented here is the down time rushing on time. So I go back to the elevation, elevation of this section. It shows a ground level soaking away from Stratford Wall. The bay window of number five is only a metre from that wall. And the proposed building will be just ten minutes and then the other big building, which is just is really where the site is. The drainage system, which is the important part, the rainwater from the roof would fill three baths. And that if the water is not, was not passing, it will be distributed evenly on the ground. Well, as the ground is already flooded, it can't really go any further than on the ground.
Sorry, I'm going to have to stop you now because you've had seven minutes and Mr Robinson's plan is being cut down essentially. But we, please rest assured, the planning committee has had a full report from Catherine.
I've got the thing here, which I can show much quicker. I thought it would be your thunderstorm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Robinson, would you like to?
Thank you.
Come and just have your answers, please.
Thank you. Yes, I fully endorse everything you have said. I'd just like to add one or two points. This year, I went to the yard actually in the Woodyard. And they said that the water had backflowed from the river up through the store drain. I have been trying to get Angry Water to do something about that. The water was groundwater, so there was obviously floodwater from the river. But it didn't know it flowed back. So I think the the flood risk report that was sent is deeply flawed. It's incomplete, inaccurate in many particulars, and Eunice talked about a few of those. And I think the proposal to alleviate flooding will actually just increase it because it's taking water from the roofing, putting it into an underfloor reteroir after it's filled with water, which can't be very big. And if this will just send flood out and add some flooding, it's already taking place. The ground is going to be saturated anyway. So there are other things about the height of it because it's a metre high than three thousand and eleven, number eight, the middle of the six, eight and ten. And it's going to be very much like a very overpalmed two storey property. Go safe pool levels and to hide and else. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just before we start the meeting formally, as if the bodies in the here, would you be happy if we knew that planning item? Once you've just done the formal business of meeting, we'll hear that immediately.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you very much. So you're welcome to stay. We will have a discussion about this one while we're here. That ends the public session. So we start now with the main meeting, agenda, parts of apologies for absence, that form. That's a try.
That's number four on me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
Actually, declarations of interest, any declaration plus or prejudicial interest, other considerations. It's talking to the local, isn't it? Now, I can start quickly.
Yeah, you will get your age usual, as I sit on planning and I will probably be seeing that as in another place, I think. Then I won't comment on that track.
And actually, can I start with that, Lebarn?
There's an item about Burley Peace and our living Burley Peace. There's no one here, it's just a maybe Burley Peace.
Yeah, I mean, effectively financially, it will be quite terrible.
Just in case.
Anything else? Thank you very much. So we'll just receive the minutes of the planning committee on the twenty seventh of June. It has been received at full council. Everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. So those approve. Right now, we'll just change the order of the meeting. So we can look at planning application number three, which is five of the villas Stratford Road. And you've all heard problems with the elements and about the flooding problems, which of course we do have well. This is an application we've had before us a number of times now. And it's come back before us in a very, very slightly modified form. It's going to be a side extension with two gables with a valley in the middle of it, which will have skylights to allow light to get into the floating below. Flood risk is the main thing, as you'll know from Catherine's report of July two thousand and seven, is mentioned in it, but not the December Christmas twenty twenty flooding, which could almost be sad. Buckingham neighborhood plan policy I four, so there should be no development in block planes two or three, this is one two. The new balcony is the same and the national planning policy framework also is the same. Catherine, go on with you.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't think my position has changed at all from the previous applications that we've had here. And so I'm happy to propose that we refuse this application and send our objections down as they have been done many times before.
Thank you. Second please. Not for mine. Thank you very much. Catherine, Buckingham society.
Buckingham society certainly.
Let's drop you in it.
The poll is exactly the same view as it has held when we passed on this before the application. Frankly, we are incredibly incredulous that it should come back, having been actually dismissed at appeal by a planning inspector. And the attenuation times, I think, as Mr Edmondson points out, will probably make things worse. So we shall be writing a statement to object to.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak? Catherine Harvey.
Just to say it's really tedious and was there money to waste on developing all your plans? Because it's the same view. Get up, let him just get up now.
Yes, one of the points that Catherine made very strongly in her report is about the void underneath for the building up. So it doesn't cause flooding elsewhere, but as Catherine says, at what point, you know, do they stop maintenance on that? What's going to happen under there? Is it going to breed rats? You're going to have debris which will cause further problems. The other thing is I mentioned the valley between the two gables, which has got lights. There are two windows on the end of the building, which will have scraped down onto those roof lights and into the cloaking on the toilet. So at the best, they should be saying frosted glass or whatever. Let us aside things at the moment. Catherine, anything you want to add? We've had a proposal in second, so all those in play that we continue to pose this on the previous rounds. Thank you very much. Eunice Robinson, that that helps a bit. Thank you very much for coming tonight, putting your face.
Thanks. In fact, it's hard to say it because where it could be absolutely overgrown, hard to hear anyone. Nice to hear again.
Thank you very much. Right, if we move on then to item number four, which is the Ocean Way section one oh six agreement. And you'll be aware, amongst the three major section one oh six contributions are sport and leisure, education, highways and transport. It's sport and leisure or cart and Buckingham, thank you for the opportunity, union football club. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so yeah, would you like to come and join us on the table? Sure, sit down. So I've come here today to really start our case to benefit from the S one oh six money. So I'm the club secretary and I'm also looking after the development, club development section. Next slide please. So this is, this is the first development we need to do. It may be so early that we might not be able to benefit from S one oh six monies, but this will go ahead, will go ahead in May this year because of our criticality. You'll see, this is, this is primary nine and I play rugby, problems before, I think. There's a, there's a, there's a corridor right up the middle with four changing rooms, a communal shower and then just toilet. Now, this just doesn't lend itself to age related or gender related. So we have to, we have to review this and it's now due for intervention. So next slide. This that this was, as you see, is what we're going to do. We're going to put the plant in the middle and then have access from either end to four separate changing rooms. And each changing room will have its own toilet and five showers for fifteen boys, girls, adults. And that way you can see we can put a under thirteen's girls team there and an under ten's boys team there. So this, that's what we're going to do. It's going to cost us a hundred and sixty thousand. And if we can't benefit from the grant on that, we will have to go out and get private loads, et cetera. But that's, that's where we are at the moment. We are completely lacking with behind our success at the moment, in playing numbers. Next slide please. So our priority, as I sort of touched on there, we continue to develop and refurbish our clubs. We bought new grounds. We've, we've got more car park, we've got more pitches. We've got more changing rooms and those ones we're going to have to do. But still, we now have twenty one active teams across four sections. I think there's something like twelve hundred members of our rugby club now and, you know, serving multiple. And unfortunately, we didn't benefit. There was something wrong this last time when the last autumn development went ahead. But that money was taken by us for other purposes. Fine, we understand that. There's good reason for it. But we now are in a critical need for developments, particularly for gender and age. Next slide please. So our first and foremost is additional pitches. And I believe that there is some land we put aside for leisure purposes and if that could be pitches, we'd be absolutely delighted to look at that. So what we at the moment are spending twelve to twenty thousand on our pitches each year because they're overplayed. We have to, at the moment, we we're putting sand on, we do drainage, getting the grass up to scratch, just so that we can beat Neath next year, which is, it's becoming quite difficult. So those new pitches would be an absolute godsend and we would be delighted to engage in any discussion regarding maintenance, use, management. I just put an estimate for the maintenance of those pitches, which would be about sixty, ten thousand a year. May come down a little bit, might be outspread around a little bit, but that's something that needs to be taken into consideration when you're, when you're putting these pitches in place. And that's our top priority. Next slide please. So additional changing, although we have now those four changing rooms, we have two sports England specification changing rooms as well. We'll need these other two, which I believe will come with the pitches, that's a possibility. That we would again want to utilise. I would put a figure of the development, because what we tried to do with these development refurbishments, it will be reaching three hundred and fifty thousand, I think, for two changing rooms. Now, that's sports English. If they were smaller, it's not going to be less. So it's a lot of money, understandable. Once again, if there's not somebody that needed to look after the maintenance facility, cleaning, et cetera. Quite happy with it coming in and in partnership with that. So this is the main priorities. But on the next slide, finally, because of the numbers we have in the club at the moment, the club house area has become too small. We most of the season have a mark here on the patio to, because it's overflowing and people are eating outside, et cetera, et cetera, such as the the development of the women's and girls' sides. So I've looked into this and we want to keep the atmosphere of the club and we don't want the barns. So I think it's more flexible to have something that would be able to open up and close up. And a steel and glass extension, which shown on the next slide, would be ideal for us. I've gone out to street spaces court, which you'll see on the next slide, and they've quoted two hundred and twenty to two hundred and forty thousand. And that will be put on our existing patio, leaving a small room for some benches, et cetera. So that's on the next slide please. And this is at Sponers School and that's something like that we're putting on to it. So those are developments we're going, we want to serve the community as best we can. People are playing rugby. We're going out to the university, they're on a Wednesday now. And so we're in the stages of getting them in as well, so that we are the centre of excellence for rugby.
It's more.
That makes sense. Do you have any questions?
That's, that's really helpful. Just before we take questions, just, I'll just let you know the situations at the moment. You're also aware that you are one of the number, yes, yes, on clubs. And community, stout community centres, et cetera, will be bidding for this money. Number will go to Gorka. It's part of those away development is in the parish of Gorka, okay? So at the next stage, I guess that there'll be answering for everyone to tender, but what could be done. At this moment in time, we can't tell you what that money would be because it's going to be probably based on a per dwelling formula. And we've tried to find out what ballpark to go, rugby ball, our figure is.
Yeah.
To what it's going to be. But what we do know is that fifty percent of that money must be paid before the first house is occupied. And the remaining fifty percent prior to fifty percent occupation, I don't get it. It will come sooner rather than later when it when it does come. My colleagues will ask questions. Catherine, start there.
Just to respond to what you said about the historical distribution of money. Yes. Historically, there was where Embertown Way is. There was a large discussion historically where they told the flood, then historical district council informed the flood that that would be a playing field. And it wasn't, and it ended up being solved with development and that went to the Swanpool. That's the history in fact. On for the section one oh six, I met not as a Buckingham Town Council, but as Buckinghamshire Council, I've met the developers for Ocean Way. If I must say that they were not forthcoming much. And the section one oh six was not discussed in any great unfortunately, despite my best requests and efforts, they never once came to the town council discussing input to the section one oh six, which, which is unfortunate. The other thing you mentioned, I think you alluded to the Maidsmore free application.
Yeah.
When you said about playing fields, that application hasn't gone to city development control yet.
In Maidsmore.
Yes, so that application hasn't been determined. So that's would presumably go to future city development control. I've asked that to go to committee personally, so that will go to committee. Because I think that's the only, but that's just information. On for the rugby club.
Just to be clear, it's Morton Road, not Maidsmore.
Yeah, that's Morton Road, Morton Road three. That hasn't actually gone to committee yet.
No.
But from the club point of view, could you give us, the question is, can you give us some estimation about the the way, how the clubs changed? Because I know that I visit occasionally, how the clubs changed in that period of time from when you and I used to tend to play rugby to what it is now and how well, well, when I've been in the bar, it's nearly fifty percent girls playing rugby there now to what there was boys. And in our day, we were lucky if anyone wanted to come and visit us. So but now, if you could be descriptive about how it's changed and how much they've been into it and how much the club is different to what it was, I think it'd be useful for members, because we haven't been up there as much as we should be.
So contiguous administrations have looked at developing something in rugby. Our ladies play for national level two. And last year, it had come down, but it's tremendous what they've done. And that has brought on the girls. We now run in February, we have two sites in some year groups. And we're, and we're following the rugby guidelines. I don't think there's a one hundred and fifty to the under thirteen, so like, yeah, the sixth level. So but next year, I think they're going to extend that all age groups and put more pressure on others as well. But, you know, we've embraced it and we, we go out to schools. Whoever's in school, we try and encourage play rugby. If you want to come and play rugby, we're open, we have open days, et cetera, et cetera. And we just want, you know, to make sure that we address the whole of the area. Catherine Davis.
Very much. Just going to say, having had my daughter playing rugby under eighteen three years ago, three years ago, maybe. And her, her child, there's a lot of women now playing in the swamps, which have got two teams now. And my friend's daughter is now selected for plenty side. There is a huge amount of real bringing these young people on to very high standards of what we look.
And we're benefiting from, I'm committing now, it's sort of really our, it's, it's the women and it's the Um, and we're benefiting from our commitment now as it sort of really are like, it's uh, it's the women and it's the others, the mothers of the of the youth side that are coming up. And we're seeing that expand. Unless they come on, their ideas come in, we're changing, we'll be tired. Well, cool. Any other question? That's the hobby.
Yeah, I'm just curious, the actual club itself, is it a charity?
Uh, we are now, and it's a company, but we are a charity as well, uh, sorry.
In Normandy, they're the chief of university, they had charitable status on site.
A charitable status on site. Couldn't quite hear the reply also. It's we're a limited company.
A limited company.
And and uh we're a charity status.
Okay, okay, so obviously you get some tax benefits on that.
Uh, yeah, I think now we're on that, I'm not quite sure.
But I think what we really need to tell is a little appraisal of all the sports clubs and pitches that are available. And you, for example, I don't know what happens with scores, but both of all that and then about the score that pitches that are not used at the end. Um, you know, what script is there is going to be done up on those.
Yeah, we 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 plead, but they they that's most of the time, I know Latin school play, I think, uh, they can wood play. And we have had reasons in the past, but they tend to get wet and they they're not going to cut up and so they don't want us there. So I mean, it's practical, it's, this facility is my reason why we can share it on stage.
Yeah, I mean, I think I just, I think we just need someone to order, and those are the do that order. But I think we need someone to order, because I think whilst I'm a rugby supporter, they also support other sports, you know. And we know that the, you know, the best, the pitch in town, you know, uh, very keen to expand as well. So from opposite, we've got to be equitable.
Yeah.
But I think what we need to know is how many of our people, how many old people, if you like, who are involved. Um, and and so we say twelve hundred members, that's that's great, that's a good fundraising start.
Yeah, yes.
Let's begin with.
Yeah.
Are we doing this, that's who we're doing this? Is there someone in commission that is somebody?
That's a start.
There wasn't a small study done from the historical district council. Wasn't particularly forward looking in the sense that it was what it was and it just counted football pitches. And it didn't actually go into the wider scope from my memory of what the wide range of rugby and whatever and hockey. What I can say when I mention schools is there's some story around this. Buckingham Second School, which is my school, um, has got an international rugby player at the school. Who actually um plays international rugby um in the town. And and, you know, an un-dom hero and probably will represent our country here, there and everywhere around the world. So, and she teaches boys and girls at Buckingham School and their pitches are fully used. Um, there is need to look at a study, but trying to get Buckinghamshire Council to do anything in any short sweat, that wouldn't happen. And I think this discussion about where proportion section one oh six needs to be something that we find out when the money's proportioned. And we have a discussion about feasibility of it, because um all this other stuff's future leg. And we've all been round the wheel many times as councillors with other people. And there are many um drain holes and false errors. But I I think that's something, it isn't a question, but it's more of a future thing. But I do think that we do have to recognise that all this is in clay. And also Buckingham Second School, they mean over the other day, not when my, they actually did three years ago. Actually, I think beat Marley, which was a marvelous thing to know that Buckingham Second School beat Marley. No thing was done about recognising it anywhere. But that shows how much rugby's changed in the town is important.
Can I just answer your question? Uh, Elsborough, uh, I'm doing a survey that I that my last secretary, I mean, has responded to.
Helping me out a lot.
Uh, I I I have to send you the details if that if you don't mind.
Well, so it turns out.
Yeah, it is, it is, yeah. Uh, but I I responded and I put it in the beginning of this evening and the report hasn't been published. And they're looking at as a requirement, but it's still, again, they get two to three years now. Um, if I send that to you.
Yes, thank you.
John, was there something else?
I mean, yeah, I just want to say that when we come to look at the money, whether it's going to be the section one oh six, and to have that money suited. Perhaps we might try and influence Buckinghamshire Council, spend some of that money on a proper future purpose sporting needs for the town. So we've got some sort of strategic document that will help not only us, but more importantly, a future section one oh six plan is to be spent properly and strategically across the town. Whereas we go by, you know, with the same another changing room. Let's look at the vision and the structure for the future. And it'll take months and someone to do that.
Unfortunately, the Buckinghamshire Council will not engage with us on any section one oh six. So this is some battle we're fighting.
But we can try and we keep trying.
It can't be us.
Paul, anything else? Thank you very much. We're happy you're on board with it.
Yeah, thank you.
Very professional presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Good job, guys.
Right, um, on with the agenda then. Um, I should find Buckingham Lady, um, Bernadette Elsborough. I think it's a local, as Gina popped here tonight, if there are things she wants to say. Right?
Um, we are meeting over the form of two days, one last thing there. Then we will get the working group together.
Thank you for that.
Welcome then.
Now, the way councils touch free, visited Gorka, Lembra Parish Council on night.
Yeah, um, this will be committed. I I visited Gorka and Lembra the other night and clearly, um, they didn't vote on it while they're down. It's their business how they side draft. Um, they were curious about many aspects of future development, highways, roads and whatever. And they didn't say in the meeting that they were agreeing to, that they weren't averse from having proper conversations with us. And realising that prejudices that we face, the prejudices that they experience. And I think it would be wise of us for um to ask them if they wanted to be part of any working group to make sure. Um, if I believe still correctly by the chairman that Mays Morton expressed similar interest to actually get these people involved in the onset of the plan. But I'm very much minded to the situation when we had the western bypass in the earlier design plan. And then we had to go out and do it all again. Um, because there was misunderstanding about the type of road proposed. So that's but, I can't speak for Gorka, only the what they said. And 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 they recognised the challenges that they face. And so I would propose that we meet that challenge with open, open expression of willingness. And I'm sure the working group is only going to be making recommendations and the council will make decisions. But we need to include broader people in it, especially after listening to discussions in the public session.
Yeah, just to remind members, in twenty nineteen, Gina and I did a grand tour of one of our neighbouring parishes. Um, probably pointed out, probably some of those parish councils have changed a lot over the last three years. So Gina and I will probably do that again in the coming months as as part of presenting our device. It's all, John?
Yeah, I think picking up on the points of my session in public session. I just think, seeing everyone wondering how we might do that. And I think it's important that when there are proposals forward, that will obviously be taken into account. What's been said, that we want all of us agreeing to put in a full lane near motorway through the middle of our town is not a good idea. Um, but I wonder within the design guidance that we're in the process of creating our existing plan. That has elements about houses and other developments. Does it say anything about roads? Could we put something in the design statement that is about how close the road should be to someone's back door? And what we might have to know is there is a bloom, there is a bloom of pollution of noisy particulates. That emanate from cars, tyres, car exhausts, fans and everything else. Could we put something in there saying whatever happens in the future, a new and busy road that carries external traffic in a road, whatever. Shouldn't be any closer than text number of metres. Do someone back up where a storm shelter is playing and then could develop as well.
Thank you for passing on to Gina, um, for the working group, that's a subject.
I think what we have to f down on is the knowledge based around his table and in our friends in Buckingham Society and interested parties in the industrial state and whatever. What we can't rely on, in my personal opinion, is oversight and views about how the town goes forward. We have to be fully involved, we have to be fully in the centre on that. Um, so I think how we get to the next stage is going to be autumn led. Um, how much that information from the study is made public? If that isn't made public and only left with your Buckinghamshire Council, that's reason to worry. Because if we can't talk to you about it, that isn't a good thing. And it seems always our ways of leaking out, I don't think. Uh, but they, um, but but not that, I know how that was done, but but they, um, but they, they do have ways of getting out people to open them. And but I do think we do need to um own it because we experienced what was done to us in the Vale of Algarve Plan, where we had a settled plan about where development was going to be, which included the Buckingham Transport Strategy. Which included a western bypass, which saw the world as it was at that point in time. And that made its way into our plan. Then the district council amended the Vale Plan and gave us all these other developments, which coincidentally, four hundred and twenty of them are probably where we would wish to discuss. Highway improvements if at all. So we do need to be involved and if they are not going to involve us in it, there's a financial knock on to us. Because they do, do have the right as town councillors to be consulted. And we do have a financial in it. We'll be investing Buckingham's money in drafting a neighbourhood plan. So why wouldn't a a planning authority want to be as inclusive as possible with us? And if there is something they wish to tell us or not tell us, it'll be a determinant cost to us. We don't want to be in the situation that we had to go out again, three years into drafting a plan. Because suddenly we get told where a road's going to be by this time, a statutory planning authority. Where last time it was the change of mind of one parish over the road. So we had to go out and re consult, which cost us, I think, three thousand pounds at the time or more to go out and consult again. And that delayed the town local neighbourhood plan, which probably delayed it not enough for the district council to put the amendments in. They did too, which put in Mays Morton, Mays Morton Road three and other things and Ozzy Way. So I think this is important, um, history tells us it's important. So um I do think after the next plan meeting, we need to jet through the chairman that we have a strategy. But comes forwards from that plan, how to deal with it, which everyone can add to, but we do need a strategy.
Yeah, I just just another information, the Ozzy Way section one oh six contributions include eight hundred and forty thousand pounds for Buckingham Transport Strategy. Which is so no longer existed, it's come back. Uh, that money is to be divided between, you will in eight four two one, between the Blacklife Roundabout and the Tesco Roundabout. Um, a left turn slip at the Old Stratford Roundabout, just come back to Walworths. Um, those were on the council at the time, remember when first Morton Road three application came up in twenty sixteen. This was going to be mitigation for the extra traffic on that estate. Um, I I went to the strategic sites committee and pointed out that already is a left turn only lane at that roundabout. But they they've ignored that and put it in again. Um, the third thing will be the Buckingham townwide cycle network improvement. The fourth Buckingham to Silverstone Park cycle route. And the fifth infrastructure to facilitate increase in bus frequency to Winslow Station. So that's the five um things that that section one oh six plan is going towards without any reference whatsoever to that last part of our plan. Well, thank you very much for that, we've got a lot of business tonight, we'll move on. Thank you so much. Um, other neighbourhood plans, um, we have in fact two of them in front of us. Gina had prepared a report about Mays Morton one. And just going to briefly let you know about Winslow, the neighbourhood plan, which we have already indicated to them, we support in principle. Um, it's going to extend the development boundary of Winslow to the more than parish boundary to take in the three hundred and fifteen new houses, more of the Great Forward Road, that's about allocated site. And that earmarking more houses and station road on the rugby field and extra care homes. The old Winslow Centre, it'd be five hundred and thirty nine houses in all, not counting the two hundred and fifty of income currently bought in third lane. Winslow's credit, it is sticking to thirty five percent affordable housing as as we're insisting on, on level or more dwellings on sites of point three and a half thousand. Couple of things in their draft have changed already, the rail link to Elsborough's already been axed. Um, and the Oxford Cambridge Ark, here's to being dropped, although the government's currently in something of a state of flux and we can't get any more infernal that. But what this will all do, it will increase Winslow's population to four thousand seven hundred to around six thousand seven hundred. Um, with five hundred and thirty nine new houses. Um, members are quite entitled, if they want to have a say on it, to have a look at the draft, make comments until August eleven. I think as as a planning committee, I'm presuming everyone is happy with what they've come up with. Because we we said from the, yeah, that we were supporting what they were doing.
Just to say that things in that plan, that what was the old Canton School area, I believe, if my memory is certainly correct, at Cabinet and and that. Um, and in the council meeting, it was alluded to some development um on that school site. That's what the old Winslow Centre, Winslow Hair Homes, it was alluded to in public, that they were planning to do that.
There are absolutely, I mean, you live big as sixty five houses on Station Road, seventy five on the rugby field. Eighty three extra care homes on the old Winslow Centre and three hundred and fifteen houses on the Great Forward Road. So that's that's all made up. So it's what Winslow's asking for, um, when they get to a different market. So are we happy, would you wish us as a as a planning committee, this to apply, as a council to apply, quite apart from the ones you want to apply? Well, thank you very much. You've suggested all of Gina's reporting of the Nokia tonight, which she did a report about Mays Morton. Plan, have a heard of this lesson, the comments on those. John?
I think it's as good as far as it goes, but I can't see that the future council are going to accept it in that form. Because it doesn't include any new build at all. And they've drawn their settlement boundary of more that's around where the current houses are. Um, and they haven't even seen the development that's already had allocation, which is about dozen houses um north um of the road as you go towards Aintree. Um, that's only been allocated, that's not even part of it. So I think I would say good luck, but I don't think the shy council will accept what they have proposed.
Right, well, there is a recommendation you'll sit down to the document from Gina, the committee submits a representation which is supported of the plan. Particularly in Port Dawson, it could be made of the lack of public transport and especially lack of state walking and cycling facilities. To the essential provide that service provided residents of Mays Morton within Buckingham.
Yeah, I appreciate the recommendation.
The, you've opposed that, I'm going to make this form, but thank you. Opposed by councillor Donnie, you have a second? Councillor, thank you very much. Um, all is in favour?
Well, that's it, we're going to pass it on at the moment.
Go on.
Understand.
That you're one of the.
Again, extensions, one extension. Thank you very much, that's fair. And finally, just a very brief level update from the Walmart Drive, your official review. I think you're all at council last Monday when we talked about this. And this is about pattern card councils continuing efforts to get the Walmart plans overturned. The bottom line is that, um, as it has gone through judicial review, work must therefore stop for the moment. I know that council, the more you suggest it otherwise last Monday, but I spoke to Pat Cardcastle since. He's quite clear that this is a significant planning case, which means that the judge making a designation has not yet specified which reason applies. that the judge making a designation has not yet specified which reason applies to calling it in. He will in due course, but it seems very strong that work cannot commence on this until that judicial review is heard. And that won't be until second to third of November and the Royal Courts of Justice has been set down for two days. We, the council, don't need to take part in it. We've already made our objections quite clear and everything. That's really just a matter of report, that less than one has been commented, councillor Stushbrook.
I think it's, it would be, um, if you, Chair. We, we heard statement, one side and a statement the other side. I think it would be prudent of us to ask the planning authority what their understanding is of that question you've asked. Only if to hear that, yes, nothing moves until it goes to court. Just in case there is a difference in opinion with the legal process and the planning authority, what we believe the High Court instance will be on it. I think it would be wrong of us to ask the question. Not interfere in the process, but to be assured yourself and us through you, Chair, and that what their legal petition is on it and what their understanding is, that we have it in writing. To Buckinghamshire Council Legal Department on whether it will be suspended until November. As we presume would be the right thing, or whether they're going to carry on as they are, as was alluded to. I think we need to get clarity on that because it makes a huge difference, doesn't it? Um, not only to the knock-on effect, but not, um, on how planning is going to be dealt with. I can't imagine you're wrong. So I'd like to hear it, it, it as a response to the question.
Can I start, Mark? Right, I mean, it's not subdue us, it's the case of that. No, we're only there.
Thank you. Well, we're obviously just confirming a number of other things.
It's a bit unhappy that.
Yeah.
Thank you for suggesting it, well, thanks. That's good. Excellent. Um, let's start with the other labour plans, um, action reports. Of that, of course, there's a couple of things we'll mention. Um, there's a way, lack of consultation on section one oh six. We had quite a successful press campaign with that. I can now, but I'd have carried it to the radio station, one of the radio stations and the university news. So thank you to the media for supporting us on that. Um, speed limit tingeering on the road, no public notice has yet appeared, although it is due to be announced on twenty first of June. I hope councillor Stushbrook's further information.
Yeah, um, let me just get this up, I'll read to you correctly. Um. Put on the glass, that always helps me. Um, um, I may even read it, you know. Um, on the thirtieth of April, there was a latest decision to defer this, um, decision. And it was to, um, was to go out and seek an independent, um, withdraw the permit and seek, seek an independent assessment of the traffic down the Tingeet Road. I draw from that conclusion only that that was a latest decision on the thirtieth of April, not by the cabinet member, that Mark and Ted were to that question. Um, then we had the publication or the full publication of the traffic order. Then we had the resurgence of that. But this is what was given to me by democratic services. So what we don't know is the outcomes of that, um, traffic movement. Whether it was deferred to get an act, get an independent assessment of it. So I think I forwarded that, I believe, to the town clerk. Think it would be appropriate that the town clerk writes on behalf of the council to ask, um, when that information, so she can read it in full and make her own response rather than what I think should happen. Um, based on the information, because I think we do need to know, is it will, it will determine if they come back with a recommendation for one and good to thirty mile an hour, which this council have been fighting for since twenty fifteen, probably, when we did our plan. Um, would happen if it comes back that it's still going to be, um, the forty which we didn't want. That's quite determinative. But what we have to be aware of going on in that isn't the only condition to that development because, um, there is the cycle way and the suing of that separate, which is in the rights of way application of the development there to sue, which we spoke about earlier. At which they have a legal obligation to put it in a last correspondence on that was they'd had two portions of the money, but were waiting for the third to institute doing something about increasing the cycle way still along the railway walk. So whichever way, they're both as important. Um, but that's what it is from the thirty limit what I've had. Um, I've given that to town clerk. I think it's, I'm right that the town clerk speaks for us.
Thank you. I mean, the, the line was, the notice was made on the twentieth of May, people had, um, until June twenty first to apply to the High Court if they wanted it, the order stopped. So we've heard nothing more. Thank you. Um, so we're doing the action list, probably back to West Ham Farm.
Sorry, Chair.
I'm sorry.
For me, it's a no brainer. They should be first. I, I frankly don't get why this is really strung out as much as it is. So I think we'll be able to see what finally emerges from this. But could we go back to the writing, Martin, because you skipped across that chair. We'll raise that, we're going to do it in secret.
Yeah, well, I, I'm just going through what we know. Now it's going to approach to the floor to discuss other things.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that'll do it. That's fine. So when we get a chance to go back.
Yeah, okay. We'll be able to come to the floor in a moment. Um. Councillor Stushbrook, or West Ham Farm.
Yes. The skeleton's in the cupboard, yeah. Um, or not in the cupboard, or still in the cupboard. Yeah, I, as you know, I've been corresponding on this, on booking on this for a long time. My latest correspondence to this is that they have actually, um, had a response from the archaeology people. It's an acceptance that something needs to be done. There's still the ongoing post excavation works costs have now been stated, they haven't told me that. Um, they've also noticed that, that, that there is a possibility you're looking to C I F A to resolve this matter. Um, because C I F A are a body which would look at the, um, how this case is done and what is going. I think those are, are things that they're looking at. What they haven't said to me is any any of the other discussions, but she apologises for the late response to me because I've been asking continuously. But I am at least assured that they are doing something. It doesn't seem very grand after, I think it was probably running into the fourth year now soon. Um, but the archaeology department are frustrated as we are. Um, we're wanting to find it is what we do have to do is allow that officer to carry out what is a process. Um, if we interfere with that process, we spoil the process. I am confident that they're looking at stuff sensibly. I don't fully understand what that institute does. I'd take that under advisement. Um. But I believe that they're like an institute that looks at the whole of the way to carry out archaeological works. They're like a like you have a planning institute and you have a citizenship institute. I hope that isn't a good fact to keep me off the trail because it won't work. Um, I wrote back to them and said that I'm looking forward to the outcomes of those findings. And I look forward to being correspondent with that. What's most frustrating is about is from the town council's point of view and the Buckingham point of view is our history's locked away in boxes. Um, whatever we think about the archaeology, we're seeing dead people who once were walking around and they're not necessarily, um, having the dignity of their age, date, birth and gender and everything being recorded. So I know where we go. I think if we get up to the four year plus for this, I think we need to then look at how we publicly, um, discuss this because it's not good enough despite archaeology. And it was the way that the planning application recall went through that they took their toys and made it through the development and the way the section one oh six was drafted, which said at this stage, they'll fund that, at that stage, they'll fund this. And that didn't, taking out of them not actually taking the development forward because they had to do the pre-work before development. But there is nothing in there to say, aren't they done the pre-work? You have to do that. And if you're, um, you're not going to do it for charity because you've got to pay people wages. Everybody's been caught in the Middle East and archaeology. They're not a very well-funded department, um, at the council. Um. But if they can make a summer dance about finding a few things under H S two, I think we can make a big summer dance in the new year about, um, a few things they found in Buckingham, which after all, the whole Buckingham wouldn't have got its name if it wasn't for us. So, um, I think that's quite significant. But that's as much as I can tell you. I apologise if it isn't at all.
There will certainly Um, nine St Rumbold's laying on the action list. This is expected application to make seven self-containing flats, which we understand from ladies are now all fully occupied. Uh, planning commission hasn't yet been given and it has been called in by council and why. There's still awaiting confirmations of acceptance of this call and how it's going to be dealt with. And finally, from my notes, the care home access of Corners Meadow. I know this is one of councillors' hard bits, um, that's reviewing about that corner. Were you going to have a get councillors actually to do a survey of the footfall across the council, have you got? We're bad ready to go with it, I think, aren't we?
Well, I just think we need the whole thing looking at it again. And I, I think it's an accident waiting to happen.
Yeah, so we, what we said originally was that we, we use councillors to do a survey on it.
We did before. So we, the, the car park up on the, on the London Road. We just need to find a day when we just organise a road, sir. And we'll do it.
Okay. So should we ask the planning clerk to organise?
Yeah, I'll happily work with Catherine to get that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Right, um, that, I think that's my, our action list. We'd like to be ready to speak later.
Well, we sent a letter and we had requirements. When we were going to send it, should we send a chase action? Because the nights are not now getting longer. The later we leave this, the stronger we have another winter. People are going to go home, like we walk home in a darkened area. That's not right. It's not, it's not.
Councillor Stushbrook.
If you recall, the mayor, um, did a lot of publicity on this and raised the issue. About half, I think probably eighteen months or twelve months ago at least, I remember it being in the paper. What we were told at the time was that they didn't include the street light in, in the two, seven, eight works for the Tingeet Road development because it's outside the remit of the development. So whether we like it or not, they didn't fund street lights beyond the development and that area going down to the industrial state. What I recall is that we asked, what were they going to do about it? Um, well, of course, um, apart from actually, um, funding it from resource, which I imagine isn't going to happen. We need to have a plan of action because in the plan, there was an area of land adjacent to the Rumble Cloud development that's never got brought into development. Do you remember that site? Which still sits bare and then you've got the railway walk and then you've got um, West Hills. The trouble with that is, had that site come forward and it would have been in the development, I would imagine a two, seven, eight would run down the road. Think what we need to do is to ask what the bullet standard of the light and works are going to be again. So we get that and ask them what plans, again, they've got to look at the feasibility of funding additional lights. The dark lights are coming in, it won't matter. We have no, I'm as awkward about not having it as anyone, but the reality is the mayor didn't raise this. We didn't do publicity around this. So how we pursue now, we want to make sure that we get all the facts in a row, like this is what they say, this is what they say the gap is. And then we need to go back to them and say, how are you going to meet the funding gap past the development in the two, seven, eight work of that development to meet the needs of that development to get into the town centre. And that means we have to, um, get it into some form of funding, which we need, we need, we have to get the Buckinghamshire Council to actually fund it because the developer isn't going to fund it. He has no legal obligation to fund it. The council will come back and say they haven't got any obligation to fund it, but we have to find a route where safe walk to school, I believe, with what I recall the article about children getting to school safely. And they've discussed in other places the route along the Gorket Road. And the means for children to get from Gorket to Buckingham is safe walking routes. That's been discussed in other places. But children getting from that estate and furthermore, the one on the other side to Buckingham is same. I think we need to get all the evidence together and then go forward and find where the pinch point is in, in legal terms. Because what we'll get, it's a response that I've said, we have no obligation to fund it and we have no legal. We have to find somewhere where we can pinch them down it. We can get angry, but we need to find a cause and we need to find out how to do that. Um, and better to attack them with something they can't get out of, because they'll just come back with an answer, we have no obligation and we have no legal obligation to fund that as it's outside the two, seven, eight work. And we're back where we are. And all we do then is by telling, is we falsely make the public believe we can do something, but we can't do. And we need to be collegiate, direct and proper in our approach. I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to take on proper questions and, and matters with this. All we do in other articles, when we just disappoint people with our inability to make Buckinghamshire Council follow our opinion, which Tingeet Road's got three lights all the way down it.
I just raised it because we sent a letter. I want to know when we have a reply to that. If not, presumably we're going to. That was the only reason for it, isn't it? We don't, no detail. We just think that, I don't know, Mark. That's all, Mark.
I'm not aware of anything, so I, I have only just taken over a, of course, email as a chat two hours ago. Yeah, briefly, you had one, so I'm getting more to watch.
On the basis that you're probably right, because we probably would have heard about it if they hadn't replied, can we send a chase? That's all I wanted to raise. I don't need to get along with you.
Apparently that.
That won't do.
If Mark looks into that and it's from the company reply, then we've sent it again. Thank you very much. Thank you, John, for raising that. Anything else on the action list you might like to raise? Thank you. Um, so I've action thoughts, seven one. You'll be aware of the ongoing, um, money that is still outstanding from the Silverstone section one oh six agreement, about a hundred and fifteen thousand. So originally a hundred and fifteen thousand, just over a hundred thousand was spent. Um, and we have now
fifteen thousand to go because we
stick it in the impressive approved, yeah. Um, this was originally, um, to be spent by on the town centre parking contribution solely on providing an additional door to car parking spaces. We've moved on a bit from that. Um, we're getting very close to the ten year limit now. We have to sort this out in the next month or two. Um, Catherine, what were you reporting there?
Um. Not getting any confirmation. I'm surprised.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, the thing that has parking services in store charging points, they can do this and do that. Tell the cost for that. No. Um, she pointed to Ballpoint, they were instead of the Ballpoint. But there you go. Um, she suggested we might want to perhaps include their boundary fence or do a bit of work on their trees. And I thought, that's not parking. Um, you know, it's not, the, the, there are proper adequate lights in that car park. If I pass more, they can see that end. But maybe that way. Um, so all I can suggest is that we have some cycle parking, parking, sweet parking. Because it's right by the end of the cycle way that comes to a problem as well. And so people have come a distance or they want somewhere secure, we get, like, you know, a covered, glassy bike path. Like about the other wood.
Are they going to come back and say, it was only, it was solely the car?
It doesn't say the car parking. The loading is just for parking in.
I've got, I've got the.
They can't have put forty spaces in already because there's only thirty six there. I can't personally, there might have been thirty eight because they've made two of the digital bases with the extra.
Yeah. No. I'm looking at the town covenant here, which says to spend the money. I'm looking at the tax covenant here, which says to spend the money solely on providing additional car parking.
Yes, well, they clearly haven't done that. They've spent a hundred thousand for your own something.
Right, okay. Um, anyway, to recommend. There's a recommendation from Catherine at the end of that. One that the Buckingham Athletic Football Club, we asked for their opinion on money might most be spent on. Secondly, it's statute. They have no idea as well, compared with members' choice, we also have to check out some install additional cycle racks in the car park.
Yes, there's couple of cycle racks.
Yeah. Robin.
As a third option, I need to offer is to consider, you know, when the, it costs money to put the actions out for disabled parking space and, um, so that they can park somewhere and get them. We've got one by the library now, haven't we? But which is one disabled parking space by the library, only one, which to get into the library, that means if one disabled parking space in the library that serves someone, it could be worth asking whether you could, um, without doing away as any of places, extend the disabled parking spaces from the libraries of it. So if that's a way of using the money.
Not a space. Where?
Um. Well, you'd have to extend it past the entrance of the, um, where they are. Because there's only one parking space for a library, which is serving all the community, one is any one.
But was, you've got a court park. I see where you're going to extend it, unless you say the.
Well, that's just one option, or they look somewhere else, you know, where we've got.
I mean, we've got to say there is a long shot of ability, but those places were right to get them. These are parking.
The section one oh six club is quite clear. It has to be spent on Buckingham Athletic Football Ground, the parking. So you might be able to, it's way believable to keep it on earth. Andy.
Thank you.
Councillor Harvey.
What we lack in Buckingham and in the, in the way to a car park is mother and child parking ways. And it's very difficult to open a door and get a child out of a seat, but they're just as in the room. And they're all the disabled parking along that road, disabled parking everywhere. There's just not enough, or there aren't any, mother and other than Tesco's, mother and child parking beds. If it just improved that situation.
Thank you. Councillor Donkey.
Thank you. Um, what's the options with the sign? Because we've said all along in this in the report about it not being visible, um, if you're coming down Stafford Road. And I know it says that it would, um, be difficult for customers entering the car park if it was turned ninety degrees. Um, but there's got to be a way of doing something to show people coming down the hill. There's got, there's got to be something that can be done with that, surely. So that's been a bugbear of ours ever since it was put, put there.
I think we just want.
Councillor Harvey.
It's just stupid.
Yeah.
You do not see that sign until you are actually arrested, when it's a bit late to slow down and turning. And there are no terms and conditions for them not to be able to read. Because it's free parking.
Yeah.
So there's no times, there's no costs, there's no nothing.
Chairman, can I come back on that quickly? Okay. So if we know that sign by the entrance is no good, is there anywhere like before it, just like before it, something else to be done there?
We can talk to, to highways about putting warning signs further up the hood.
Just free parking signs.
Yes, that, that's all it would say, free parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councillor Harvey.
I'm thinking, you should have minded that.
Sometimes the club has used the grass rises from the pitch up to all the parties. Could the money be spent on some of the grass streets or path there that would facilitate that? You know, on occasions where they might get a party getting cut up by cars into mud. So in order to revise it, it's.
And that's an idea.
Or do you think then the space on the allocated ones required for cars to park there?
But a green mesh stuff.
Yeah, so it's still green and just not, you know, rickets.
We've got plenty of others, Robin, didn't it? Come back.
You did one thing, you know, the signage, you can't move the signs and get these traps, don't you, that they and that to go out at night and spray on the road, free parking. And you can do the sign on the road so that when you're coming down the road, you can actually see that net free parking. And put it on the road because when we tried to move the sign, they never want to move it. And that's one option, but I just think John's idea of the crew thing seems a good way forward if they take that. But if not, get a sign so they will actually know they can park there through.
Most things could be done for itching down them.
Yeah.
But it's not just saying free parking, you've then got to put acceptance, that they'll move on Sunday.
We can just put free parking limits.
Yeah. So should we kick those ideas around? Thank you very much. I'm mindful that we've only got fourteen minutes left, we haven't even started on planning applications yet. Thank you very much, Catherine, for that report. That was rather well, I think.
Well, I see, I can't say. Right, I apologize for thinking.
Did you know?
Oh, sorry.
Right, thank you. So we can have at least twenty minutes in each planning effort. As you know, for members' information, make sure your Buckingham accounts and more Buckingham planning areas can be meeting. Our twenty seventh of July. And so twenty fourth of August.
Not yet.
Not yet. Strategic sites committing fourth of August.
Last, again, they're not yet.
And twelfth of September. Thank you. Right, so, um, planning applications, it's been Catherine's report on all these. To start off from the first one is what lands out of Stratford Road, because at the top of, um, what they had in Stratford Road, what used to be the taxi regular relay station. A very small triangle of a piece of ground. Yeah, because what's put a one bedroom, single story building in there. Um, stop room for parking, probably for two cars, which means no garden left. And of course, um, our Buckingham led with plan policy D H E six port about quality outdoor space of which will be virtually none. Um, Councillor Harvey first, then Councillor Donkey.
Thank you.
I propose we rest in no objection.
No objection.
Second.
Councillor Donkey.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, on page twenty seven of sixty five, the paragraph that is above the two photographs, the last sentence, it starts, we would like, sorry, we would look to avoid any on the street parking along a section of a class road such as this. I don't know if the wording can be changed, but I think look to avoid isn't strong enough. That piece of road. So if it could be altered, could we have at no time show any on the street parking? Because I think look to avoid isn't going to do it. Um, also, I think because of our experience of page here, we need to keep an eye on any land grabbing and any cars that may be driven onto the grass that will be ruined. And, um, any cars that might turn around because we know winter, grass and cars don't do well. So I think we just need to keep an eye on making sure the land isn't taken over by any car parking and isn't ruined. So if those two things, if I'm planning up a second. Page twenty seven of sixty five of your report.
Follow the method from the beginning. My report is thirty two. And this, this, this application is thirty one to five.
Uh, page four, sorry. Okay, I thought you had the same number in system of three. Sorry. So it's the power, it's the paragraph of the two photographs and it's the last sentence. We would look to avoid any on the street parking if that can be, um, at no time. But that's what worries me, that's highways response. That's, that's really concerning to me. This is highways. They would look to avoid it. That really does trouble me. So I think we need to be a bit stronger with that wording or suggest to them that they're a little bit stronger with the wording and that the grass and land grabbing.
Councillor Harvey.
I will adopt a contrary view, that even if it were in the case that a car ended up being parked there, that would be no bad thing because it will slow traffic. And we know that traffic going down the air, that's all we can tell. Often exceeding, often exceeding the level of three, it's an arrogant car park. It slows traffic down equally in natural shape, no bad thing.
Oh, my God.
Um, Karen, Buckingham society.
Yes, we don't have any objections to the yet full bill, but we do object to the colour of the wall which we face, uh, the A four two two. They're proposing to make it white. Which seems to us to be out of keeping the area and a white wall in the facing, uh, an halo is not a great idea. Um, I'm sure they can find alternative paint colours if nothing else. Um, but preferably, um, some sort of line of green along the wall to mask it.
Hmm, that's Buckingham society.
And also the boundary, I shouldn't, all the boundary treatment, they all seem to be different on three sides of this triangle. Um, a little bit of consistency. I can see why they want a wall there because they want to do a sliding door, so we'd have to take a wall. But, um, it shouldn't be faced with white paint.
Thank you. Um, my only comment is about the, or C D H sixteen, that there isn't enough room for them to enjoy the property. They want the two cars apart there, they're not even going to build the outside, although the technology is all glass and steel. Um, the other point also that they're insisting on calling it walk house throughout the plans and, um, we'd have to, the council, draw attention to that, there are other walk houses in the town. We can't leave that. Anyway, we have a proposal in Councillor Harvey, a second, the council, that's it. All those in favour that we, there's no objection, but would be what we've been discussing, all those in favour?
I think that's a good one.
Thank you very much. Um, number two is numbers six temple closed, which is all thirty piece. Council gravitation correction, a two storey side extension, view attached garage of operation to the system, uh, um, only requires two parking spaces, but they're showing three on the plan, one of which is actually half on their carriage and half off. That's, that's by the by. Anyone got any comments on that? Nothing for Buckingham society?
No, no, no.
No. Everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
Fine, thank you. That's easy. We've done the village, of course. Um, number four is land between thirty eight Morton Road and the old police station. This is the, um, Brantfield site where at the moment, a number of cars are parked out front. They were leasing the parking for A B C, but that, that has been long finish. Seven hundred pounds, we've accessed car parking land, so they've created works and Catherine did a report that the things that are concerned would be the shared street surface, no, no designated pavements or footpaths. Um, no, the bill, no access for anyone with any mobility problems because of the four stories. They're red brick, slave roofs, which does address Buckingham, but actively, but I'm sure the Buckingham society might have a view on that. Um, and the fourth story, of course, is going to be quite overbearing if you're down in Maryland. And it's closed down below. So. Anyone have any views, Karen?
Um, thank you, Chair. The, here is immediately, and are on the drainage. And I noticed a very detailed report on the planning board from, um, the local drainage subs lady, uh, which points out all sorts of, uh, lack of information really on the whole scheme. But clearly, at the moment, it's just not acceptable to have a drainage into the sewage system of Maryland and Strife. And we also noted the fact that it was, it was looked at Maryland and Strife in a rather uh, austere way. And Catherine, very helpful, put it on line of where the current ground surface is. I'd be awfully worried about some sites. Um, when you notice particularly at the bottom of the site there, ground levels will need to be built up clearly. So make it even higher than the Maryland and Strife, quite a part of that. Looks to me rather engineering like that.
Thank you. Yeah, the drainage obviously is something that is of great concern, but there is, at this time, there is no anger and water document on the file. We did have another look this evening and it's still not appeared, so that is obviously a great concern about the drainage. As Catherine points out in the report, drainage cannot go uphill into the Morton Road street. So it is going to duck here down. Anyone else have any views on this?
I don't know if they've addressed the loss of parking for number thirty eight Morton Road. I'm surprised there isn't any objection from.
That's okay.
I, I'm surprised there is no objection from thirty eight Morton Road because they don't seem to have addressed any additional parking for them because they're taking it away.
Yeah. Right, Councillor Harvey.
Yeah, the drainage worries me a lot too, as I've been discussing on your own unit here. All the roads that runs up the hill and towards Stratford Road. This is going to be, it's currently in system, was, you know, was trees. Uh, and mainly it's going to be our tarmac and roofs. So all that wood is going to go somewhere. Um, and the worry is it'll end up, you know, as the world, uh, their drainage system. So I, I think that a key document will be from that angle also. The other aspect of looking for is what they've not addressed, what I tend to think, is the exit entrance to the system. Because, you know, I used to live in Roy's Hall and driving down the Royal Road, you, you know, you slow up, you get to those cars, but that's on the side. Wait, this is the cars coming up the hill to get past it. That's going to be very, very difficult. But are going to be cars coming out of that, or are it to be seven drop, you know, the many, many cars. But the exit entrance, potentially, is going to be very, very difficult to, to, to manage. Um. And is it going to be safe in that, in that respect? I can see they've left a, um, display to people to see what traffic is coming by the way that they've arranged it. But nonetheless, I think it's something that's going to be tricky. But the drainage is a bit of a concern.
You know, high highways estimates thirty two trips per day in and out of the site. Um. That's an estimate. So what's the general feeling at the moment? Until we get, we know more about the drainage than the anger and water report, not really. At this point, the proof is going, Councillor, Councillor Grayton.
Thank you. Um, I think it's encouraging that they have included a number of environmentally friendly um, aspects to this site, but we can't completely ignore the traffic issues and drainage issues just because they are actually addressing some of our concerns about the environment. Um, I know it's not a large number of houses, but the Morton Road is already congested, as you say, particularly with that on the street parking. And this is just making that worse. And then I know we've got a lot of other larger developments further along and one immediately opposite as well in the pipeline. But, you know, just because this is only a small development, doesn't mean it won't have a big impact on an already congested area. But I don't see what can be done to, um, mitigate that really.
So what would members like to do? Think of proposals, please.
So we've got to post the, um, plans because we don't have enough information on drainage and car journeys. I mean, the car journeys alone, that's not including delivery drivers, is it? And they've got vans and lorries and so I mean, there's too much there that we don't. So I mean, there's too much there that we don't know about. Yeah.
I think it's also worth following on from what Margaret says, this isn't A road.
Yeah.
And yeah, we've just said, we've just heard about the, this one on top of Stratford Road, but if it's an A road, highways don't want anyone parking anywhere near.
Yeah.
Remember, we've got another A road, which highways haven't actually mentioned.
Although Castle Hare, he doesn't mind people walking on A roads, so.
True, yeah.
Do you want to make a proposal? Second vote? Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to raise something. I don't know if it would be an objection point. But uh, as well as the drainage and traffic issues. What would, my question would be, what would the lighting be like? For Barry McMoore's driving? If there's a four storey building at the back of it, that's mine, that's mine issue.
Yeah, that's the issue. Yeah.
Well, parking's very dark round by this morning. I don't know what it would be, whether. But you um. The development would be a sort of.
Oh yeah, it should be very high, isn't it?
Dark. That would be incredibly.
Yeah.
High if it was up.
And plus, on, on the right hand side, you can see the, the police station development, you know, which already tower over the, the glows on the light.
Yeah, go along with what Ryan said, light spillage from the pop cheese onto me, if that can be added to the objection.
Is that to scale?
I'm sorry.
Is that to scale?
I don't know, just. No, I mean, I haven't involved. They are a full story. From the slope of the hill. And as Catherine also said, it can be huge amount of groundwork, you know, to support all that.
I, I also noticed in that report from the drainage lady. That she suggested they might look at rain gardens, and there's a rain gardens guide produced by the UK, which I've never heard of, has anyone else?
No, I've heard of it, but I haven't actually done it. They don't want a rain garden. It's such a lack of attention for them.
Bringing in the ladies of the Buckingham. John, the other side.
Oh, I've got the dragon suit.
Oh, right. So we've got a proposer in the second, um. The proposal being that we propose it. So drainage, parking, public issues, yeah, all those in favour? That's everybody except for the council, thank you very much. Um. Right, number five on the list is. Mill Vets, St Longham High Street, walking fifteen High Street, installation of four air conditioning units. Very prospective. Um, Heritage just come out very, very strongly against it, so it's quite unacceptable. On, on a number of counts, um. Amongst others, the planning, this building conservation areas act of nineteen ninety. Goes against the new adopted Val, that goes against Buckingham. Conservation area, although they don't actually mention Buckingham in favour of the plan. Uh, although our conservation area does, does cover that. But they believe, Heritage believes that um. The air conditioning units should be removed from any damage to the building and fitting, they may build with like, like materials, match resistant. Buckingham society?
Uh, we totally think this is an unacceptable use of the building. We were trying to work out ways that might make it acceptable, having read their plea and understand what, um, why they're required. But um, surely they can find something to. Help with their air conditioning, not this monstrosity on a conservation area. Nobody else would be allowed, so we would, apart from him, he would set a precedent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they, they did try their best, they did talk to the Grand Junction to have them at the back, but of course, that would have been. Noise and blowing hot air, although the customers in the garden, the terrace at the Grand Junction.
Put on an extra chimney.
Yeah, and Castle Hare, you were next.
Uh, yeah, this was first raised recently, some months ago by another business in the town, and they were going for that. Because they're allowed to, and we're not. Absolutely, we wouldn't, no. Not possible, a green title there.
Thank you, Castle Davies.
Um, I was going to say, make a point that Grand Junction got their own air conditioning units on their way. Um, and, and they also, um. Um, burn wood from that wood fire pit, so I've been, um, which, um, I can smell most of the time in my kitchen. And working next door, um, which is entirely pleasant. Um, a lot of the time because our, our intake for our kitchen is next to their kitchen. So I think they're, um, if they're being, um, um. Then helpful to, um, women and vets. To women and vets, she started to complain about them, um, the pollution and noise that's got it there. Um, making a fight, six more hours, you know, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chairman. And to point out that women and vets have an opening and closing time and the pub. Will often be out of the hours of events, open in the closing time. And their busy periods might be more on the weekends, where vets might be closed on the weekend. So I think if we're, we're talking about, well, maybe eight till five or whatever the vets is open for. We're not looking, we're not talking about the evening as well. Where, you know, people might be sitting out in a beer garden having a meal, it's just day, daytime working hours.
People are probably talking outside lunchtime or making it up.
They might do, but then, as we've just heard from Castle Davies, if the pub can do it to a neighbouring care home, then.
I, I didn't do it to a neighbouring care home, that's not actually accurate.
Oh.
Because the, um. Do you recall when the Grand Junction applicant, sorry, the ground application was in? They questioned the fact that there's a beer garden in Grand Junction, which has been there for hundreds of years. Um. And so the crime care home thing came later. Just Grand Junction serve breakfast every day, and they're in the whole day. No, until nine until eleven at night, so.
There's got to be something that the vets can do, rather than have it on the front. Something.
Castle Davies?
Yeah, thank you. I am very sympathetic towards the veterinary centre, but there doesn't seem to be an adequate way of dealing with this. Because this is a monstrosity what they've produced. And if it means that that veterinary centre isn't viable in that location, maybe they'll look for alternative premises elsewhere in the town.
Thank you, Castle Davies.
I was, I was just going to, um, respond to.
That can't be.
Sorry, I was going to respond to cancel what I've done here. And I wasn't, um, saying that, um, they. Um, junction's doing needs to prepare home, I'm saying that. Being next door, I do smell their, their wood fire oven. Um, and they do have their air conditioning units running. Um, I should imagine that it doesn't mainly affect, um, me in my kitchen. It will affect other businesses in the area. Um, and, um, probably vet, vet surgery as well. It's, it's, um, going in, in that direction.
Good point.
So.
There's nothing that things are, I think.
Yeah.
Whether I know.
Yeah.
Is it not possible to have a pool?
He's still, he's still had to have an external, um.
Yeah.
Um.
Refrigeration unit.
Um, yeah.
Technology.
Put them, put them there.
No, because, because of a refrigeration unit like that, it's easy to sell. So you have to have it situated somewhere away from where the plant called there. So.
But.
I don't see why they can't do something with a chimney. I mean, surely in this technological age, an air conditioning unit can extract air and send it out through a chimney. As you know, I'm keen, I'm keen, you know.
It's an exception.
We're going to hear about them all.
Yeah, we are, we are.
We're not editor advice of what they've got to do, we, we've just got to decide whether we agree with Heritage or not, Heritage is so strong, yes.
Definitely great.
So even then. That would agree with, we, we also pose it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for the contribution. Um, but back to the village, but it's. Yeah, they've gone to pose here. Want to vote on that?
It could be not so close to that, so.
Okay, we'll take a vote, thank you. Your proposal?
I suppose I may just like someone else to.
Andy?
Yes, I can pull the view of the.
You're Jack, and the second, um, council again. Thank you very much. And all those in favour that we oppose it? Yeah, thank you for that. Um, forty six, police household gratification for single storey fountain break extensions. Um, they're quite large. Or fountain back, but they're not any single storey. Um. Anyone have any views on this? Buckingham society?
We have no objections. If anything, I think the front elevation is improved.
So, does everyone go with Karen on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. We're, so that would be real agree. Right, I didn't think I did, I actually, right, we will take a vote, and it's, and it's, Andy posing it. Right, then second to you. We, no objections. Um, next one is. Changing place, and what is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, number one, change place. They have a single storey front extension, it's all works. Anthony, you?
Uh, I think on ballots, it's an improvement, frankly.
Rooting six is looking to the.
Seven.
Maybe it's a body for that, they're not somewhere, look, look the better.
Yes, I was just going to say that.
Right, maybe we have a proposer, please. Oh, Anthony, thank you very much. A different secondary.
I'll second this time.
No, right. Thank you. Castle Hare proposed, and Castle won the second. All those in favour?
On E V R, isn't it?
One, well. Right, the next one, eleven Over Avenue, um, it's a double application for one of the stipulations of law, lawfulness, which we. Don't need. Don't want, but we do need to vote on the household or application to post single story and partly a extension within term of external work. Just that's where they're pointing out that the act has been, gone through a lot of trouble to. Put down what the law is on this, to assist the plan, it's my gift to their credit. Anyone, everyone happy with that?
We're slightly confused. Are they actually going to put the dormer a story in as well as the?
That's why they set those applications for them. They are, the certificate of laws is fine, it's, it's according to. Development laws.
Yeah.
Um, or they think there is a law to say what, um, law is objective. Um, it's the extension that we're interested.
It's just that they were showing a picture of the extension. Uh, without the doors.
And that's why I thought they are setting those applications, so I deliberately made it pre followers existing. The door application and the extension. Because sometimes it makes a difference, sometimes, and the doors are over looking, they, or garage brought on, so it's not affecting anybody at all. Yes.
Castle Hare, John?
It's really.
About car parking?
Are they extending them for bedrooms without a car parking?
Yes, they are, but as you know, once you get to a certain size, it, it, it doesn't get any bigger.
So it's not an issue.
Right, it's, remind me to approve it, we have a. The third and second. Well, Castle Hare has proposed in second. Castle David seconded it. Always in favour? No objection?
So everyone but one again.
Right. How did you pick the chairman's? Um, the last, some application has started, so it's also just some back exchange. Essentially, it's like last time, so we would have minded to prove if they subject the drawings, right? Uh, which they have, but they have still, um. Dividing drawing or complete title of the gate could go in front of the public highway. So as our previous position was to continue to oppose until we had the drawings. Um, if the committee minded, we keep that. I propose that we continue our, we continue on the same things until.
Yeah.
We have a second for that. Castle Davies, that's the counter, the first, the second, with all those in favour, we continue to oppose.
I think that's all.
Oh, there you are. Thank you. Three consultation, we handled the fourth one, we're done by email. And the other one was a five day notice of work, because it was in danger of collapsing on Megan Fox and Barret.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's on the advice of the pass law. But that was done immediately. Um, planning decisions, item nine, uh, with the. That are. The genetic step for land or page away, you'll recall that this was. Proved in principle back in December twenty twenty one. It was left to offices, to delegated offices to, um, prove it once, section one oh six. Three months in place, well, as you know, we were not consulted in any way on this, over four hundred and twenty houses. And the safety of infrastructure, despite the fact that both we and Gorka. The Lembra Parish Council asked to speak about the section one oh six, but in both cases. Were ignored, and I would like to propose to be right to the officers concerned asking why. We made this formal request to be involved, neither parish council, power parish council was consulted about it. That's my favourite.
I'm second that, Chairman.
Seconded by Castle Donovan. Robert, you'll speak on that.
Might be worth writing to the head of planning. The planning office won't give you a response. It'll get it with the head of planning. And you know, not the public member, you'll just get a response. Anyway, you have the right to do the head of planning and ask an explanation.
And that is, that's the one, thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Just a suggestion that included in that letter could be a reference to the new parish charter. Highlighting the intention of the new Buckinghamshire council to be. More, and more creation.
Relegated word is.
I hope you might write that, I'm sure you've all seen it, the parish charter, I'm sure only. What was really three pages, the first is just a cover, but it is absolutely clear in there that Buckinghamshire. We're working over town parish councils and promote the best interests of the community we serve. Divide quality value for money public services, promote opportunities to greater public participation and involvement in public life. And it says it intends to work on planning issues, as you know. Uh, at the time that Unit Tree was envisaged, we supported it on the grounds that we would. That more involvement, the more planning powers that be developed to town parishes, the opposite was happening. Um, not only that, but they've now started pruning all the. Planning portal sites. Um, so for instance, May's Morton, the warm up tree development, had four hundred injections. To the, um. To that, a whole lot have disappeared, they've all gone, and we're just facing a judicial review, so. How do, how do, how does, how will the judge assess, you know, who has been affected and not, if he's listening to that? Castle touch me?
The, that was done by different cabinet member to the planning cabinet member. Paying out of the, having his member, um. The, 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 and, uh, the board and that. I think if you address that question to the planning people, they'll take, oh, that was drawn, it's probably. Um, different cabinet member, think what we need to do is. Look at what they stated in their mission statement, which was the mission statement, well, the mission statement was what they sent out. When they wanted to have a sinking. the mission statement was what they sent out when they wanted to have a sinking unitry, their mission statement was they sent out again, repeated it in the shadow authority when they agreed the terms of reference for the Buckinghamshire Council. And then, that was the route that we got to, to get this document, it's a four page document, that's quite a lot, isn't it? First, I could have wrote four pages, even me, um, actually, I could have wrote all the four pages. And then it's definitely got somebody ready, but, um, but, um, but I think that's the route to actually ask them, that they have a methodology and, and, and they promised at all points.
Historic.
Historic, and they made it into statement. I did ask the cabinet member, um, who didn't seem to realise that it had been agreed at cabinet that, um, how is he going to proceed in meeting the obligations in the charter? Who didn't realise that he'd actually voted for it at cabinet. And then we. Yeah, and it was published, and it's a public document, and they agreed it at cabinet. I do think we need to go back and do that, he did promise to talk to me at some point about it. And that would be, so that could be not something for tonight, no, but I think we need to sort of get that all together, bring it back to the committee. Everybody talk about what it said, and then go back with a more guided um, approach to it, saying, this is what you said, this is what you promised, this is what you done, and this is what you produced. How are you going to meet your obligations? So that they don't have anything to step off.
So we'd remember to be happy we made this item for the next planning committee. Just something else I'll pick up from Devoe, I'm very disappointed because also to provide effective services, Buckinghamshire Council would encourage Buckinghamshire ward councillors to attend their parish and town council meetings. As you can see tonight, we have one of our six, which I find quite disappointing, is that's written into the charter. That's just an observation, other people may see it differently.
No, that's all.
It is a crowded room, it's an marriage.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone for that. Um, Sammy Inspector.
Sorry.
Oh, right, yeah, I'm sorry, this, this is about, um, raising a complaint about the two, the town and Gorka being ignored, so all those in favour? So it's yours.
And are we going through that ever, I don't know.
Yeah.
I just needed.
Planning is. Captain, having food in the, I think, just in the field, it's lodged against the future of Gorka, the farm direction, the drilling, the with the tax garage alongside the, and now really I think there really need to do a lesson on. Noted, yes, that's noted. And also the field's been lodged against the enforcement notice uh, about the twenty-eight more than name, uh, intentional fencing and claim of use of land and need public vital level.
Good and noted.
That's loaded, thank you very much. Karen, you probably not to go out, that makes.
What happened?
Yeah. Uh, Buckinghamshire Council matters to receive news of Buckinghamshire Council, we got some other information from Buckinghamshire Council members. Present, happy, how well?
And, thank you, what I'm gonna do, I know it's my down strength, and it's kind of brief, because what I want to do is to ask that you look at the correspondence that I've provided, I've provided to Chancellor, which is the response to this question on the eight four three one, I've got the written response. The response, the question on how the council's going to consult uh, its own members on the Buckingham development plan. And then perhaps to say that I've asked those questions, I want you to read them, then come back with your thoughts about how we perceive that. And lastly, I'm awaiting a response, um, to go in the public domain, to deal with the swamp practice. I'm still waiting for them to put the responses to the ask in the public domain. They haven't done that yet, I've been pushing for that for a while. If that happens, that's good, but I think there's some information which viewers, members haven't seen. Uh, I've seen it, but I need it to go into the public domain, so you can read it, then you can determine what you think of it. I think that's probably enough, we covered most of it earlier in the evening.
Thank you, Robin. Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, yeah, that's a very, very good email, um, I recommend everyone can see that, we can make that public now.
Yeah.
Well, make it.
So, when was this sent out? So, when was this sent out?
I only got it at south of New York.
All right, so we've not been certain.
I'm try, I'm trying to make sure that we look at the documents, John, together.
That's fine, that's fine, I guess I won't miss it.
So that will be such a negative, if you make a number, it's a very, some very good document, actually. Yeah. Okay, um. Robin, thank you very much. Any questions for our ward member? Thank you. Um, an updated list of undecided affairs and ten called applications is attached for information. Noted? Thank you. Updates we represent outside orders, um. Anthony, anything on the North Park's planning, parish's planning consortium?
Nothing to add, Chair, to the rather long conversation I told people with, um, at the, uh, full council meetings, so nothing special.
Um, I've, I've seen some of the correspondence, um, with other parishes, with, with Jeffrey Culverhouse, and obviously with overall dissatisfaction about the section one oh six situation, not just for us, but for all the parishes. But, you know, parishes are getting money raised from development, which is going to the south, to town, et cetera. Robin?
We are it will be a planning issue, the way we look at things going forward, we will be aware that possibly in twenty twenty-three, boundaries change. Um, electoral boundaries change for the constituency boundary, it might be worth us considering how we um, because there'll be, we'll have to share representatives, whether she is after that, might be something we need to look at, because when it comes to a planning issue, even a road issue, even citizenship issue, we need to probably be talking to, if not Milton Keynes Council, but the Bletchley Town Council who's on our level, find out you know, there's going to be these things between the two of us, and we're going to be in the same, um, though not, we're going to be in two um, unitary councils and one parliamentary. And I think we need to think how we perhaps deal with that, because there's going to be quite over the opinion. It's gonna be weird for a while, but we're gonna have to learn how we live with that.
Parliamentary constituency boundary, which I've no set point of planning.
No, but, but what I'm saying, it's gonna if growth plans, it's growth may come, there may be an opinion there on one part of the constitution, but diverse opinion on the other part of the constitution. I think that maybe we just need to wait until that happens and look at it. It might be something we don't need to do anything about, but it might be something that we need to at least have our officers having conversation.
Okay, that's good, fine. Thank you, Robin. Um. There are no other outside bodies that, right, apart from the youth centre, um, it's a need for preparation. I'll speak to Katie Clumson.
There you see.
Right.
I think all that's the last thing Paul did before that last one, they might as send you a report round to everybody.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah, we all, we all have that, man. Thank you. Um, Buckinghamshire Council, meeting meetings. We want to stop that, yeah. And that's going, that's looking back, what's up, so funny. Show Buckingham applications and a few of them, if that's been counted. Uh, enforcement, you report any new breaches? Karen?
I wasn't going to report a new breach as such, but there was a condition on the, uh, manor cottage in, um, Little Lane, I think it was, uh, to have their door, the place was like, like, which they disbanded and put in a very unsuitable door, and enforcement said it should be done by the twenty-second of July, and it has not.
Right, so we, we can prompt enforcement from that.
Yeah, I think probably must have known as well that in hand, it seems quite female. Well, I mean, I've not had a feel against an enforcement notice from the foreman before. And I got two on the same night, because one was obvious applications for Gorka Park, was an enforcement notice at the end. I mean, they have, we have dismissed already, what?
Yeah, I just, they should still H M O, um. I'll tend to detail through to
At least the number.
In number seventeen, in number seventy-one, number seventy-one, let's already backwards, number seventy-one. Um, rubbish outside front, and, uh, then left in. You know, they've changed residents, but they've just left all the rubbish outside the front. Um, I went down to meet the decision, lovely, took a coffee, and a great dog, and, um, and, um, but it, it's left there, so I think we need to raise it, because it was actually got H M O, um, wasn't the discount for pressuring to have a. Um, because we do need to make sure they push that tidy up, it's not good, the other residents have to then put up with, they've had the money out of it, and they should tidy it up.
Thank you. Um, I have one to raise, which is Old Fellows Hall, uh, which is a continuing disaster area.
Hmm.
Um, Maggie Trent pointed out to us that section one oh six legal money was twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-five pounds that's due to be paid to Buckingham Town Council for the treatment and refurbishment of Daryl's car. She asked if, um, this had yet been paid, because, well, there was old fellows, had to be ten days notice prior to first occupation, the money had to be paid before that. Uh, we approached Lee Phillips and Paul Watson, um, so they they've not been approached, there's nothing lined up at the moment. Um, but it does appear to be occupied by students now, and it's now we've escalated it to ourshire councils, ward councillors. And in fact, Council Warren White has contacted Steve Van Brick to say that things are there to gone from bad to worse, and I won't, I won't read the rest of the emails, because we consider this slander, but all right. Uh, anyway, so it is in the pipeline at the moment, but, um, Warren has suggested we in Buckingham Town Council, big voices, Buckinghamshire Council for that one, so.
I can find it.
Yeah. Castle, Robin?
Uh, two possible breaches, one I'd be in touch with, having already about, well, we know that yes, they have to do scaffolding outside new building offices, counties, what have been taken down rather noisily on a Sunday. Uh, the work began about seven o'clock, and I understand, almost about four. Um, all the hydraulic things that we've used, and that, under the blocks, on scaffolding, and all the tractor, of course, stealing um, shafts, nothing else. Um, the document was specified how they would do the build, that obviously agrees partly with the planning uh, decision. Speculating they would not work on Sundays. So I think we also highlighted the planning authority, and now captains that you do our members to conspire, pink form on it. Right, I think people say, but they are in regions, there are instances too of where these builders and owners have been in breach of their, what they said they would do. They're not doing what they said they would do, um, their suggestions as well, have some of the, um, processes work, not being particularly safe um, as well, but yes, particularly was about noise affecting residents living nearby. It's not fair, it's not right, and it isn't what they agreed to do.
Thank you.
How a second, I'll let you finish. The second one, um, that I want to raise is about the scaffolding, so it's good. Again, they've got that scaffolding out there, again, and people with various forms of ability or cushions or whatever can't get through them, they're very raised bit of, it's there. How are they allowed to do this without still allowing proper passageway for people who want to get to the shops, um, that are nearby? This has got to be wrong. Um, where are ourshire councils? What are they doing? Do they ever enforce anything like this at all?
Is that scaffolding still there?
The last one I watched it was.
Yeah, yeah.
It's on Friday, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think it was still there once I looked. And then we're there, so I'm, I think it's still there.
Castle touch me, then Castle, Robin?
It goes back to the bit. We haven't seen, that was the white letter, um, which perhaps we ought to see, um.
No, it was, it was on the end, directly.
Was it? Okay, right, okay, that's fine then. Um, but I do think that we shouldn't just rely on Castle, I think we should ask.
We've got quite plenty of evidence, Mr. Strong's as well.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I know, but I think we need to have a more got a more collective approach from the Buckinghamshire Council. We asked them to personally take up these issues, both the other two Buckinghamshire members. I mean, I could take it myself, but it'll just fall for storm. Um, so, and now I can take it what I like, where I want, by what they say, and I do so. Um, there's no actual constitutional reason why I can't do what I want, by what they say. Um, or legal reason why I can't do what I want, but, um, but I think we should ask them to both get involved in the matter and take some ownership of it, because it has gone on a long time, and clearly, I take it that the one ward member has on this quite frustrated with the, you know, statement with it. Um, angry, and I think that we need to get the other two members to support him in those concerns, and try to diffuse the anger and try and get some more direct approach, if that fails, and that it happens, and I think he's done. I might step over the brook again, but, um, and to have a look at it, but I think we should give them chance to work together, the three of them, to get it done. We can't leave it just to one council, there, there's two of them.
I think Castle, I've asked all three ward members, and everyone who's acted, and this is, haven't had any councils of the burden or before.
Well, they shouldn't leave it just to him, and, and they should support.
I can do no more.
No.
I'd like to ask, ask him to act, to, to help on this. So if you wish, you committed to write to the other two again, and say, can you support Council White in this issue? Um, but if they're not, then I'll have to step over the river again.
Um, the all the consequences and the ordnance of that, yeah.
Because he's having committees wish that we we do that, they ask the other two ward members to assist Council White and, not getting odd fellows all sorted out.
Hmm, yeah.
They make it more, yeah, I did it. Warren, with credit, we have to.
We've got to go in there with that, and make sure people.
I don't know whether or not this would be a breach, but, um, when I walked down Open Avenue and you get to the end of Open Avenue by the Over Your Express shop, it seems to be overgrowing quite a lot, and it's starting to overgrow now. Would that be classed as a breach? Apologies, Phil.
Not true. So, definitely not. We have a standard, and we sort this hedge out, or we'll do it ourselves, and challenge.
Perfect. Thank you, anything else?
They, they just need to picture of where it is, and the amount of order.
So, anything else on the, um, enforcement? Uh, just to note, walking to an open information, the ports of pizza takeaway operating and they sell, that's been passed to enforcement. Um, apparently the school was asked if their school car, car park could be used outside school hours, allegedly had no objection. A bit unusual.
I don't know that it's their land.
No, it isn't.
It's, it's public land, so.
Right, okay.
And there, there is a bit of car park, which is, um, star car parking, which has got a barrier, of course, whether that barrier is there or not.
I wonder why the school talked that.
Yes, I do know that they do keep that car park locked.
They're starting to do it now.
But presumably they're looking at, um, another parking um, between the, um, school and the community centre, whichever.
It is, it is on the hands of enforcement.
Yeah.
That's a very, very important issue here. Um, it isn't for a store to start acting as a highway spiraling and start issuing help. Um, they may believe that they, and that their curfew land is clearly within that fence. As our curfew land is clearly within our fence, the other area of land, um, is at a bay, and I think we need to uh, this, the, the land is due to be adopted, all the areas are going to be adopted, but when they discussed that, there is this problem with the entrance in and out of that estate, and that road was supposed to go around there and go out one-way idea, but they couldn't do that. So that is going to be highways, so I think we need to, I get the correspondence and send it on to um, the council, because if they want to take ownership and fund and enforce them, they can't be doing that, and if they suddenly find out revert, they've given a licence for them to do that, they don't not only that, that'd be tremendous licence issues. So we need to establish what the facts are, but they can't, cancel those, they're not, can't be choosing to as a van out on their land, or not their land.
What happened was that flyers were distributed to the houses on that still. So with these people who've got a nice make up in their back garden, and they were offering pizzas. Make up in their back garden, and they were offering pizzas, and, you know, they were still sort of wanting all organic ingredients and that sort of. On Friday and Saturday nights, parked at the school, and I thought. I'll check, so I emailed the school and said, are you aware of this, and they said, we have a problem. So, as long as it's out of school now. Because of the children. So, from what you've just said, I was going to ask if it is a van, but it's not then, it's a house. It's, it's a backup of a house with a very small flow socket. I mean, I'd imagine they've got a parcel there, health and safety and environmental health, I thought some.
This is why it's going to be important.
It's a serious issue, that is. Needs to be measured as good business, yeah.
I could just ask what county that is, and there is a precedent for this, when the county council, as it was central in Wall Street. Um, used, used to allow the garage customers to use its car parks, and again, there's a tacit agreement out in.
Yeah.
Daytime hours, customers could park in.
Yeah, but, but that was because it belonged to Buckinghamshire County, and this land, the road doesn't belong. The, there's hard spaces and that, believed to be defined differently, is part of the adoption of the lands and stuff. Our land begins at the gateway, and their land begins at that gateway.
But who's the owner of it?
But you'll find that I believe that land in and out of there is probably belonging to Buckinghamshire Council when they adopt it.
Not the store.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and so it's county council.
Yeah.
So I think what's in.
I think we need to get the maps out and look at it, and because if it isn't adopted by anyone, we need to take it over.
Yeah.
Because someone needs to own it.
Catherine?
I think the difference between, um, the, the parking that you're referring to on Wall Street, the, the Wall Street Centre. And the parking, um, spaces, um, which are outside of the school's personage, um, in front of, um, the school. Um, the, the Wall Street parking is actually on their land, it's private land, whereas the parking in front of the school is public car park.
Anyway, we, we'll also chuck all that out. Thank you very much, um, item fifteen, application for trees, uh, updated list from Catherine. Just worth noting, in the Buckingham label, um, obviously P H E one does say. To protect existing trees and provision of trees for new developments within Buckingham. Um, I think at some point we can have to look at this, very, very closely, because. All this tree filming is actually going against the Buckingham label plan now, it's getting more and more serious. In another tree film, the pageill, it's weak, um, and it just goes on and on.
That's why, it just lists on every agenda, that's the player that's disease.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's one more of the G P O.
Yeah, thank you very much, Robin.
Well, I think there's a carbon analysis in there we need to be doing, we need to just go back to Buckinghamshire Council, they made. Quite a lot about their land, and so the park five hundred thousand trees. Um. And every major tree you take out, we need to ask them when they're going to carbon analysis. But I understand, this is something that some people have done, a tree has a value. And what you do is you add up the value of the tree, and what that tree actually cost to be removed. And you have to get to value that tree, now what the tree is valued at, a tree is an asset, how much would it cost you to actually, um. How would it cost you to replace that tree? What you need to do, and I met someone the other day explain this to me, um, that you value the tree, say the tree. About an oak tree of two hundred and fifty years old, and how much would that be worth? That might be worth, um, hundred and fifty thousand. And then you say, well, you have to replace that tree at hundred and fifty thousand pounds worth, and then when the application comes in to, um. With the subsidence, they have to do analysis on the value of the tree, tree having valued it down the country. This is a way of fighting against, um, this thing where an application comes in for insurance, um, it says. Oh, we have to take it down, because I can have a value for true, tree has got the cost and the value, so we need to. What others advised by someone, I forget who it was, a clever man, um, and about, that's how you complete this continuous. Um, application on the ground subsidence, because we need to get the value of the tree. Think we go and look, there's somewhere, um, a website, um, you'll find it on there, and some local authorities do this. It's a way of, of holding back on taking out major trees and even substantive trees in urban areas. Because they have a value, and if they're worth a lot of money, they just, then they can take the tree down, they have to spend the money. And pay for the cost of replacing it.
Yeah.
And, and that makes it much more difficult when it comes to a subsidence case.
Well, as you know, this is ongoing, the action, this, we're regaining information between spaces and manager about this, and we have invited insurance company reps to. Meeting to discuss that, so thank you all for this reminder, that's ongoing.
You have a value.
Yeah.
I thought Caroline greatly, she'll look there.
Item sixteen, matters, report any damage to purpose with other signage in the town access, or any other urgent matter. Ryan, I'm going to raise the group. Anything else?
No, yeah, I've got no chairman's license for information, only that the date of the next meeting is Sunday fifteenth of August. So, yeah, for whoever's not on holiday or is not during it, don't worry.
From Nashville, yeah.
Sunday fifteenth of August. I think so, we can't make it longer. On that note, it's not.
Not twenty past, twenty past nine.